I'm asked to. I'm calling me in order begin with a pledge of the flag called by moment of silence please. Pledge of wagers to the flag. The United States of America. United Republic, for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Recording in progress.
Moment of silence please. Thank you. Let's roll call please.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Hough, here. Ms. McDermott, here. Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Rayna?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinnly?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. The first public hearing this evening dealing with the establishment of the Luzerne County Arts Advisory Board. Talked about this for several meetings. We've introduced the ordinance. Public hearing in that regard and then later this evening it's on the agenda for voting items. This time we're open for any member of the public who would like to speak in regards to the establishing of the Luzerne County Arts Advisory Board. Once more, any member of the public who would like to speak to the council regarding the establishing of the Luzerne County Arts Advisory Board.
One moment, Mr. McGinnly, this is Mauro Berry is giving him the ability to unmute right now.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, the public has the ability to unmute and take turns.
Okay. Again, any member of the public?
Hello?
Hello?
Hello.
Would you identify yourself please?
Can I speak?
Absolutely. Identify yourself please.
Certainly, my name is Hillary Palencar and I'm calling from Larksville. In 2017, I went, I went to a meet and greet of council candidates and the very first person I asked a question of was Sheila Sademan. I asked the same question to all of the candidates at that particular, in that particular year and the question was, what do you think of David Pedri? She spoke very, very warmly of him as someone she had practiced law with under the courthouse dome and that she was very ardent in her respect for him. What I'm concerned about is the incestuous nature of this art advisory board specifically because of her support of it. Anyone who is literate in county happenings is aware that C. David Pedri, I suppose that's his new name now, C. David Pedri, is, is the head of the Luzerne Foundation, which is absolutely cultural in nature. The fact that these two coworkers have other attorney friends working under the dome of the courthouse and now want to take under their, into their wheelhouse, the arts of Luzerne County is extremely disturbing to me and it is, it is very, very incestuous in nature. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other members of the public? Tomorrow, everybody has, it's unmuted, right? Everybody's able to speak?
That is correct. Everyone has the ability to unmute themselves at this point.
Thank you. One more time, any other members of the public who would like to speak? If not, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Well, I, I have a question. I guess in general for council, I don't know who brought the, you know, the ordinance forward about this. But it's the Arts Advisory Board and I guess my question is, who are they going to advise? Like, what is the actual purpose of the board?
I believe it's right here, Linda.
Well, it says to, the purpose is to advise, to generate and pursue the advancement of the arts across Luzerne County. I, I was a music teacher, I'm a musician, I mean, I'm all for the arts.
Website.
I would just like to know what they're, how they're gonna do that and, you know, an advisory board usually is advising someone, so who are they advising?
That's a good question. I mean, after we, after we select the, the, the board, that's gonna be their task. I mean, I'm sure they're gonna go out in the communities. I'm not sure if they're going to go to different communities. I think that was Mr. Grossman's thought, to have his meeting in different areas. Hazel just got this built a new art center down there. I think he told me he wanted to go there and, and I'm sure he has very different ideas about doing it. It's his, his thoughts. He's really up my path, this stuff. So I think we're putting it in a good hands with him, exactly what he's gonna do, I'm not sure. But I think it's in good hands with him. That's what I know.
And the reason I ask is that we recently, well, several years ago.
You're on with Barry.
We eliminated several commissions that were, I mean, we have a commission for women, we have diversity.
You wanted to call Tony.
We had several commissions of this type that, you know, who's gonna be opposed to a commission for women? Who's gonna be opposed to diversity? But it ends up being, you know, not, not a commission that did, did too much and, and I'd like to see an active board. If we're gonna create, create a board, I'd like to see a board that's gonna be active and have an idea of exactly how they intend, you know, what the intent is for their activity.
Certainly so do I and I think again, in his hands, he has some pretty good ideas about how he wants to do it. I trust him to see how things go. Only thing we could do is give him a chance and see how it goes.
He couldn't come tonight to talk about it?
No.
Call the hearing?
He, he was here a few times, I mean.
Yeah.
About a few years ago when this whole thing started before COVID.
Right. Okay.
I'm sure he'll come in, I mean, or at least come on the video sometime. I mean, if you want to in the future.
Okay.
He's very, he's very up on. And as Ms. Hough indicated, there were some boards and commissions that we eliminated because they weren't active and we didn't have membership and looked at our paper, but nothing was really happening. So that's what happened. I think it was two or three at that point in time. Lot to have a motion for adjournment? We have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Ms. McDermott, Mr. Schnee, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition in the abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Our second public hearing is in one minute, 5:50, so wait. Time please. Okay, it's now 5:50, we'll call a meeting to order. We've already done the pledge in a moment of silence. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Hough, here. Ms. McDermott, here. Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Rayna?
Here.
Ms. Sedman, here. Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Present. What is that?
Can we mute? It's people talking, picking up conversations.
Okay.
Can you mute the public for, you know, until it's time for public comment?
Mr. Potts? We're getting some feedback there. Do we need to mute them until it gets to the comments?
Conversation, we were picking up and talking and maybe, did you mute them?
Okay, seems to be quiet right now, so. Our meeting for public hearing tonight is regarding the ordinance, admitting the intergovernmental agreement with Butler Township for the repair and dedication of roads in accordance with the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Law, Act 177, 1996, previously adopted as Act 180, 1972. This deals with the road that the county owned that was repairs and things were completed on that road and then we were to turn the road over to the local municipality, in this case with Butler Township. Mr. Potts, can the public now speak? Are we unmuted? Can the public speak now? Is the public able to speak now? Are they unmuted?
Yes.
Thank you. So we're open for any members of the public who would like to address the council in that regard. Any members of the public who would like to address the council in regards to the roads down in Butler Township? Any members of the public who would like to speak to the council in regards to the intergovernmental agreement with Butler Township for the repair and dedication of the roads in Butler Township that the county turned over to? If not, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Well, yeah. Could I just make a comment here? I, I just don't wanna hold up the voting meeting, you know, as long as we're having a public hearing. Do we have an idea about how much we spent on this road before we're turning it over?
Well, do I know directly? No. I believe it's, was over a million dollars, but I don't have any specific number.
Do you know how long the road is? Cause you know.
Actually, the road runs through three different municipalities. Butler Township, Cunningham, and I'm not sure which is the third. And we turned over roads to some of the municipalities, but I think there was one that was still outstanding.
Right.
We did that like two years ago, I believe, right?
Right.
I think that.
We'll get you the, we can get you the amounts. We'll get you the amounts.
I know somewhere in my files, I have the list of, there were 127 miles of county roads, but a lot of them are little snippets of road, you know, throughout the county. And I just wondered, I, I thought this was a part of one of the longer roads.
Yeah, Split Hills Road Driver and we have another name in there.
It's, it's definitely a longer road.
Nine miles, you think Mr. Schnee would probably have some.
Nine miles? Yeah. Because see, there's this idea about, you know, that, that every road that is in the county is a county road that, you know, could be repaired by county workers or something. And, and I know we had 127 miles at one time, I'd like to know where we stand now. Okay, thank you.
I think it's worth actually turning them over, which I think we did with one or two municipalities. Hopefully this completes the process with Butler Township. And there were a lot of compliments from the people because the road was in horrible condition and I lived down in that area and there were a lot of compliments and thanking the county for their, their work. Interestingly, you said that, cause Sunday I met somebody from down that area and they talked about the roads and how much better it was with the standard it was right up to. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One quick question and the reason why Mr. Pedri selected that road to get done was because the municipality was taking it over. Yes.
Right.
One of the things that they're pursuing at that time would be to complete the road, repair it fully up to the standard it should be and then, you know, the municipality would then take over the road and maintenance and things. So then the county road and everything would then have to continue that. So again, if they didn't agree to take it over, it'd be not done. Right. Okay. All right. That was the crux of the matter, so to speak. Are we good now?
Thank you.
We have a motion for adjournment?
Sedman.
Second.
Saven, Mr. Perry. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition in the abstentions? None heard, motion carries. And we're now looking at 6:01, which would be five minutes till the voting session. Mr. Griffin, you wanna talk in the public session?
At the end? I'm not sure which session it is.
Well, you can, I don't know what topic you're gonna talk about.
Oh, it was just general, I wanted to thank council for particular action you guys took months ago.
Okay.
Do you wanna wait or it doesn't matter?
Well. Now, you're the guy who's making the commentary. We're not gonna do it now.
Oh, okay.
We can't do anything till 6:01 now.
All right, well, I don't, I just wait. You're right.
Okay, no, I was trying to figure out where you, you checked your public session on agenda, but if it was something in the agenda, then I would.
Just let me know.
Yeah. Okay. I didn't wanna hold you up.
No, thank you.
Because the public session may go a little while.
You guys do a great job.
Okay. All right, no problem. Mr. Deander, the work session follows the voting session, okay? Very good. Okay, 6:01, we're gonna call a meeting to order. We're gonna begin with a pledge of the flag called by moment of silence, please.
Pledge of wagers to the flag. The United States of America. United Republic, for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Yes. We're here.
Ms. Hough, here. Ms. McDermott, here. Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Rayna?
Here.
Ms. Sedman, here. Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinnly?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Our first order of business tonight, we have a proclamation. This proclamation was requested through Mr. Griffith. Whereas Luzerne County has experienced a dramatic increase in death and addition addiction in the past several years due to trafficking of illegal drugs. Whereas law enforcement officials at the municipality, county, state, federal levels work together at every opportunity to combat the scourge of illegal drugs in our nation, state, county, and local municipalities. Whereas the execution of search warrants on Wednesday, September 22, 2021, by the United States Drug Enforcement Agency on the direction of the acting U.S. Attorney Bruce Randler, the Pennsylvania State Police, the Luzerne County Drug Task Force, under the direction of District Attorney Sam Insangodochi, and the Wilkes-Barre City Police Department under the direction of Chief Joseph Coffey. Resolving the arrest of several illegal drug traffickers in compensation of cocaine and fentanyl valued at more than $1 million that was targeted for distribution in our local municipalities. Therefore, we, Luzerne County Council wishes to command all law enforcement officials involved in the ongoing battle against drug trafficking, particularly those who were instrumental in the September 22, 21 operation. We have that proclamation and it's been signed. Is there anyone here who accepts that on behalf of law enforcement?
Police Chief Joseph Coffey?
Yes. Police Chief, go ahead.
Oh, Chief Coffey from the Wilkes-Barre Police Department?
Yes.
On behalf of the Wilkes-Barre Police Department, like to thank council for their efforts in recognizing the great work performed by these investigators involved in the case. This type of case shows what can be done when there's a cooperative effort between the federal, state, and local authorities. I can assure you that although this case was significant, these investigators are doing this type of work every day to address the drug problem in the city and county. Again, I personally thank you for recognizing their work. They're very dedicated and do a fantastic job.
Thank you, chief. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. McGinnly.
Go ahead.
Thank law enforcement for a great job. Not only taking drugs off the streets, but saving lives. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Greg Griffith out here in the audience. I mean, he, he approached us over a year ago and started calling federal officials and state officials to put that on their top priority list and, I mean, you gotta know him, like, he'll constantly keep calling you till some action's done. So, Mr. Griffith, thank you very much for your role and all you do for Luzerne County, whether it's picking trash up with groups and everything else. I mean, thank you very much for all you do for Luzerne County.
Thanks, council members.
Okay.
Mr. McGinnly?
Yes.
I'd like to thank Walter Griffiths for putting together this proclamation and recognizing it on behalf of council.
Thank you. Okay. Additions or deletions from the voting session agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Present. Mr. Schnee? Any segment in all favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition in the abstentions? None heard, motion carries. We're now open for public comment on agenda items. Members of the public who would like to speak to council in regard to any item on the agenda? One more time, anyone from the public who would like to speak to council in regards to any item that is on the agenda for this evening? Okay. Our first item on the agenda is approval of amendments.
Mr. McGinnly? I'm sorry to interrupt, I just noticed we have a few new attendees who are not able to unmute.
They are able to?
They are not able to yet.
Okay.
Give us one moment.
You'll let me know when they're able to?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McGinnly, if I could, Mauro's working on that?
Sure.
Okay. On that proclamation, I just wanna, just say a brief note to everyone that's on the internet listening as well as people that are attending in person, that council, I think it was about a year ago or so, passed a resolution commending law enforcement back then and asking them to step up and, and get, get some things done for the county as far as drug enforcement. And that was an action of council many, I think it might have been two years ago, correct me, Mr. McGinnly? I think it was about two years ago, the council passed that resolution. Yeah, and so, thank you. So, so I, I just wanna commend council for taking that action back then. And now, now we see the fruit of our labor of that, as well as the, the members of law enforcement, particularly the U.S. Attorney's Office who stepped up and, and has made a concentrated effort to do this. So I do appreciate the council's support on the proclamation because that was a vote of council in, in its entirety for this proclamation. And I want everyone to know that we are behind law enforcement 100% on this. So thank you for, so much for the support from council as well as from the law enforcement community. Thank you.
Okay. And one thing I will add to what Mr. Griffith said, I think as the chief of police from Wilkes-Barre City indicated, you know, you see that in the paper because it's obviously a big arrest situation and confiscation of drugs, et cetera. But I personally know that every day they're out there working on, on dealing with this problem and coming to some solutions and going through the process so that we do have these kinds of large arrests and confiscations. Mr. Demaro, are we okay with everyone?
That was your problem, I don't see him unmuted.
Are they all muted?
No, it's just everyone's unmuted.
Yes, unmuted. Everybody has availability to speak?
Right.
Okay. Anyone who would like to speak that we missed before? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the amendments? We're saying hold on.
Okay, Mr. McGinnly, we now have everybody with the ability to unmute. Sorry for the delay.
You do or you don't?
We do now. We currently do.
Okay. Is there anyone who hadn't, didn't have an opportunity to speak? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the amendments on September 14? Ms. Saven, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry? I'm gonna question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition in the abstentions?
I abstain, Mr. McGinnly, I was not here for that meeting.
Thank you.
I have seen, I have seen as well, Mr. McGinnly, it's Kendra.
Okay, Ms. Rayna, the stakes also and Mr. Perry.
The same reason.
Right, right. Okay. So we have two abstentions and one notable. Okay? Thank you. Will we down to agenda items?
Now, Mr. McGinnly, old business?
Yeah.
Number one, we need to correct it. Under old business, there's three s's on, on this. But last meeting I had brought up the, the issue about the Leo agreement. I understand that, I guess there's gonna be an investigation at the airport board regarding the one non-executed contract that was sent to us. Do we know when that timeline or what the timeline might be for that? Do we know when that timeline or what the timeline might be for that? For answers on why that contract was initially sent to us?
Why the contract was sent?
Well, why that non-executed contract from July of twenty twenty was sent to us?
In my estimation, Mr. Urban, the contract signed is not a contract, I believe.
Yeah, but Mr. Peersley had responded to me that the airport board said that there was going to be an investigation opened up.
That was reported and it was part of the action of the airport.
Correct. And I know you and Ms. McDermott are on that airport board.
And Ms. Parkmo.
And Ms. Parkmo, right. And so, I just wanted to see if you guys had any information on that.
The action was done last week.
Okay.
I have so much moving forward.
Okay.
I mean, I personally did not make that action that was done by the board. So, moving forward through the social, I'm sure.
Okay, who's going to investigate that on the airport side?
They said they reported to the proper authorities and at that point?
Okay.
That's their decision, who the proper authorities are, they know much better than I do about the legal authorities.
Is that the actual airport executive director's side, or is that the airport board that's going to notify the authority?
My understanding is the solicitors, there are two solicitors, Mike Puterah and Dodd Fredrickson, and they were going to oversee or guide the report to the appropriate law enforcement office to do the investigation. You know, there's no problem to reaching out to either one and see where that's at.
Okay. I just wonder who's going to be responsible for that. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. McGinnity, if I could, under old business?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Thank you. I have a concern about the land bank issue that was recently passed by county, by Hazelton City. And I'm really concerned about the fact that county council needs to hold up having the deed, processing the deed on that, because the land bank did not exist. From what I can gather from all the information, it's been talked about, I think Mr. Cassatt was at our meeting a couple, maybe a month or two ago, and there was no land bank board together yet at that point. And yet, they purchased the property in the land bank. And so, I think that the council needs to take appropriate action to stop them from registering the deed until we get, until they get a certified land bank to make that purchase authentic, for lack of a better term. I don't believe the land bank has the ability to purchase any property without a bona fide board, without an administrative staff, or certainly without a budget. Unless, unless they do actually have that at the time of purchase, and they can provide them documents to council, I think we probably should hold up waiting for their deed. So, if that requires a resolution, maybe I could bring that for the next meeting?
I don't know what the status of that was, that was brought up at our last meeting two weeks ago. And I think at that point in time, if I remember correctly, I thought it was a redevelopment authority from Hazelton, but I'm not, I don't have that in front of me. So, we'll have to check it out, see what the status is. I don't have that specific information.
Actually, your chair, if I could?
Yes, go ahead.
I brought that up last meeting, and you, in fact, it was the redevelopment authority, but it was not. It was this, essentially this temporary board, which is done apart from state statute. This transfer should not proceed whatsoever.
Am I correct in saying, Mr. Haas, that's the way it was listed, the redevelopment authority?
It just, I mean, the mayor himself came here and talked about the board weeks prior.
No, no, that's not, my question is, is that the way, that's the way I saw it. Did you see it that way, too?
You said it that way, and it just wasn't the redevelopment authority upon further review. So, that transfer needs to, we need to put a halt to that immediately.
Okay. Where is the further review? Where are we going to get the further review?
Well, we'd go to the tax claim bureau. They're the responsible for transferring that over, so that needs to.
Yeah, but have you seen something that we can grasp or get hold of?
Well, I think, I mean, ultimately, it's a managerial standpoint, but you know, if Walter just said, if it needs a resolution, we can certainly do that, but I think we just need to put a great front administrative.
I understand that part, right? I thought maybe you saw something or had access to something that indicated that. No?
No, just from the public statements in the newspaper and from the mayor himself, when it was before council.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for looking into that.
Yeah, Mr. McGinnity, I think, I think what happened was the land bank made a purchase through a tax sale auction, even though there was no budget for any of the purchases, nor was there any budget transfers authorized by Hazelton City Council. So, that's, that becomes the issue, is that there was no actual land bank to make that purchase in place, because they had no, no staff there or no board together. There was no board members appointed by city council, and there was no ordinance that, in the Hazelton ordinance, is a established land bank. So, that's, that's the concern that I have, and if we allow.
I understand your concern, but my question was, I believe what I saw was the redevelopment authority, and if we had access to something that showed us something different, that would be greatly appreciated. But it sounds to me like we have to do more research.
Yeah. Well, like I said, we can send out an email to maybe Sean Shimani from the Tax Claim Bureau and get some more information.
Yeah, we can find that information, but we'll have to do the research behind it. I thought maybe someone.
I'll have the Office of Law draft the resolution if we need to next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Down to agenda items. Motion about the resolution authorizing the acting county manager execute a contract amendment with ADP for the payroll services. Do we have a motion? Ms. Seaman, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Perry? On the question?
On the question? I was opposed to the outsourcing of payroll when they did it, and I'm still opposed to the outsourcing of payroll. We did payroll in this county for two hundred years, and now we're paying somebody a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year in Jersey to take the job of Luzerne County resident. So, I'm opposed to it.
Okay.
Mr. McGinnity, I'd like to make a motion to remove Realda's name off of this particular resolution, since she's going to be pretty much executing the agreement.
We can't vote on any motions on our agenda?
I'm talking about just removing her name off.
I can't vote on any motions on our agenda. You said you're going to make a motion.
Make a motion to amend this resolution, that we have that ability to take a name.
Mr. DeLuca?
Yes.
Could you hear Mr. Urban's suggestion there, please?
I mean, a new sunshine act requires that we have the agenda out, at least for the public's review. I don't understand what.
Can I sound upon this?
Why, Mr. DeLuca responded, you certainly.
I guess I really don't know exactly what the request is to remove the county manager's name from the contract?
No, no. I want.
On the resolution.
Ms. Prokomo's signature line removed off of the resolution. I mean, quite honestly, a resolution is an executive function, I'm sorry, a legislative function. And there's no need for the executive to sign off on a resolution. There's nothing in our bylaws, there's nothing in our admin code, and there's nothing in the charter. The only thing that the county manager can do is send it back for reconsideration, back to council. I mean, all resolutions and ordinances are technically a legislative function of Luzerne County. The only thing is, is you know, when she's signing something that she's also going to be executing, it's not even, I mean, if you're going to go back and negotiate a contract, we're allowing her to execute the contract, but she's also signing off on the resolution itself before we even see the final language of whatever contract is being signed. You know, it's a little bit more precarious to, because she's an attorney, and she has, you know, professional standards and conduct to follow. So, you know, I'm making an issue of it at this point, because you want to authorize the acting county manager to execute a contract amendment, but we're not seeing that amendment before it's actually executed, if this should pass. But by removing her name, it takes her out of any type of conflict of interest, and it also allows me to vote on this, because I can't in good conscience still vote on any resolution that her name is on. And like I said, it is a legislative matter. You know, ordinances have the chair, and the vice chair, and the attestation by the clerk to council. There is no reason that the county manager needs to be on any resolution in this county, because it's a legislative function, it's not an executive function as far as a resolution execution.
I don't see the legal effect one way or another, but what I do know is that this, what I believe, and there are council members sitting at the table that are more aware of it than I am, but I believe that this has been the practice from the beginning of the home rule government. I don't see what legal effect it would have one way or another, to be honest with you, but if, if I could request, and we have, I've said this before, we're really trying to be as prepared as possible from an office of law perspective when it comes to matters that council will address at meetings. And if this is something that you feel strongly about, well, we could have discussions about it before the next meeting. I'm not prepared at this point, as I sit here, to give a legal opinion on this. I think I would want to review the charter, county council bylaws. I don't know what legal effect it has one way or another, and I also don't know, as I sit here, whether or not the county council's bylaws, or the charter, or any other, or the administrative code, has some sort of provisions in it that require that the county manager sign the resolutions. So, I'm not prepared to debate you on it. I don't believe that this would violate the charter if you just made a motion to have the county manager's name removed, but I don't know what other consequences there would be with that action, and I'm not prepared to give a legal opinion on that right now.
Well, she's not a voting member of council. The action is done by eleven of us, up or down. I mean, the signature is unneeded on any resolution.
That's, I'm not.
We're the ones that actually passed the legislation of Luzerne County and approve it or deny it. And so, the attestation is done by our clerk to council. I mean, just like back in the commissioner's day, you had a clerk to the commissioners. You don't really need the executive branch signing off on a piece of legislation here. This isn't like, you know, government, or at least, you know, like gubernatorial politics, where it's got to go to a second branch of government for approval.
To be honest with you, Mr. Urban, this is a debate I would be happy to have with you over the two weeks, excuse me, over the two weeks that lead up to a council meeting. Council has been very cooperative with, with the changes that I'm trying to make in order to limit mistakes, and to make sure that we're giving council and the county manager sound legal advice with as little room for error as possible. And to have a suggestion at a county council meeting about a fundamental change in the way that council has done business for years, because you don't want to vote on something that has the county manager's signature on it, I'm not prepared to debate you on that now. And I could, that's really where it ends. I have no legal opinion at this point. I'm not prepared to give you a legal opinion on whether or not removal of the acting county manager's name from a resolution violates any other aspect of county code, administrative code, the bylaws, or the home rule charter. And I am not going to practice law on the fly on something like this, when we have two weeks until the next meeting. And if you wish to go through it, I'd be happy to at that point, but I'm not prepared to do it now.
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Okay.
Mr. McGinnity, if I could?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Griffith.
And, you know, this is, this issue has come up about dating our resolutions and ordinances, as well as who signs them. I know our resolutions have your name and the manager's name on it, and then the ordinances have your name and the vice chair's name on it. So, there are some serious inconsistencies. I certainly understand Mr. DeLuca's point on trying to make a ruling. I know that, you know, it's difficult to do that at this juncture. So, I would suggest maybe that we could push this off to either the code review committee or to the legislative committee for a discussion at their committee meeting, and maybe bring something back at a work session for council to discuss on the format of resolutions and who signs them, and all of that stuff. And council can make the appropriate decision on who we want on our documents, and we can move along. But I think that would be a good step to try and eliminate this once and for all. Over ten years, we've been kicking this thing around, so I think it's time to address it.
Well, we haven't been kicking around for ten years.
Well, I brought it up under, I brought it up under public comment before I was elected many times about no date on these documents. I know Mr. Shiner has it well, so it's not something that has not been discussed before. So, you know, I just don't understand why.
I don't think that's been an issue over the ten years.
Well, I just don't understand, I don't understand why we have a different signature on a resolution than we do on an ordinance. But again, that's something that we should discuss at a committee meeting and then move it along.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Seaman and Mr. Perry? Any other questions?
I just have one comment to Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Haas, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you know, I appreciate Mr. Swets, because in the agenda packet, he explained the alternatives to switching back to in-house administration of payroll and the like, so I really appreciate that. I still think we can do it. I do with Mrs. Halk. We should have taken that approach years ago, and really done things in-house, saved a lot of money, and keep the jobs here in Luzerne County. So, I'm going to vote no against this as well. I encourage my.
Certainly your project, Ms. Haas. Certainly your project.
Yep. And Mr. McGinnity, I also want to say that we are not using a time clock system. I know the whole point of ADP was.
We're voting on a motion for the ADP contract amendment.
Yeah, and this is, this is germane to that. The whole reason we went with ADP. Yeah, if you give me a minute to finish, if you give me a minute to finish more than three words without interrupting, I might be able to get it out. So, my concern, my concern here is that when we bought the, got the ADP contract, it was to put the payroll system in sequence, so we didn't have nine payroll cycles. That was the whole reason why we went with ADP. When Mr. Lawton was here and when Mr. Pedry took over, we had an issue with nine payroll cycles, and so, we went out with ADP, because they were able to get that in place, and that was part of the implementation, and all of those things, and that, and that has happened, and kudos, budget and finance for getting that done. But one of the problems that we did have was we had the chrono system that had to integrate with ADP. Well, that was one of the reasons why we went with ADP as well, is because we had chronos. Well, now, we're not even using chronos. Now, basically, we're having managers enter time. So, I don't see the reason why ADP is a, basically, we're just entering data and paying people. That's what we were doing before. Before we had ADP and before we even had chronos, the manager submitted the time to payroll, and payroll cut the check. That's basically what we're doing now. The only difference is, we're using electronic format somehow. So, I disagree that we need to have an ADP contract.
If I just can speak to that, and it doesn't really relate to one way or the other, whether we should go forward with ADP or not, I just want to be clear that chronos is a timekeeping system, and it actually keeps the time that employees accrue, it's their vacation, their personal time. So, it's a timekeeping system, and it, whether or not the managers are putting in the time or the employees are using the, you know, the thumb and/or hand entry, it's still keeping the time, it's our formal way of keeping the time for the employees. So, I just wanted to, maybe you're saying that, Councilman Griffin, I just wanted to be clear, that it's, it keep, it keeps all the accruals of the time that the employees earn.
That's correct, and that's, that's exactly what we were doing before we had chronos, was a timekeeping system by hand. And the difference now is, it's a timekeeping system electronically by computer. So, there's not, no fancy function going on here, except for the fact that the manager is now typing in the time into a computer for everybody who works for him. That's the only difference right now, because the employees are not tracking their own time, we're tracking it for them.
Okay.
Mr. McGinnity, if I could just to clarify something that Mr. Griffith said, one of the reasons that ADP was promoted was because of that synchronization of payrolls. But the fact is that that synchronization was done before ADP ever did payroll. They were in their implementation phase, but the county workers didn't work with synchronizing that payroll. It all had to be done before ADP would take it over. So, that's just.
Well, I think the county workers had to participate, obviously, because they.
Right, but it was. It was done before the first ADP payroll ran.
If I can offer something, I don't know the exact, actual timetable of when ADP took over, but I can tell you specifically that one of the assistant solicitors, Patrick Delavalle, was very, he actually. was very, he actually coordinated the, the synchronization. And then we worked with ADP to bring, carry that synchronization over into the system.
Okay. Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair. Is Mr. Swet's available?
No, he's out of town.
Okay.
I'm, I'm available, Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay, you're on. I didn't know that you were going to be on. Go ahead, Mr. Swet.
Yeah, I'm on. So not to take up all the council's time, I did put together the agenda packet, which talked about the timeframe to Ms. Houck and Mr. Griffin's question. Payroll is way more complicated than just pushing a button, whether it's done in-house or not. I talked about the change in the W4s, all the changes between presidents, all the things that have changed, and the timeframe that if this gets shot down, budget and finance will be scrambling. It's an executive request and a council decision. You've got 38 pages of notes, the original contract, all the subsequent contracts. And Mr. Griffin had asked how much it was. It was roughly $675,000 over the four years. 175 of that was implementation, which takes it down to an average of 125. We budget 130 a year. So you have all the information to vote. I don't think it's as simple as it sounds, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Chair?
Thank you, thank you, Brian. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes, I'm going to vote for it.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Houck?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Epstein.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Seven, yes. Three, no.
Seven, yes. Three, no. One, extension. Moving down to number two. Motion to adopt the resolution approving the recommendations of Zigman Company, LTD, regarding security bond limits to protect Luzerne County against risks of loss for calendar year 2022. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Houck, we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Schnee, on the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Epstein.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
And yes, one extension.
And yes, one extension. Number three, motion to adopt the resolution approving a contract for broker USI Insurance Services or Insurance Broker Services for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. We have a motion.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
We have a second.
Second, Walter.
Mr. Griffin? On the question.
Mr. Chair, on the question, if I could?
Mrs. Schnee, and then yourself, Mr. Haas, please.
Very good.
Go ahead.
Again, I see five individuals were involved in interview process, and five all came back with the same recommendation as a USI, as the insurance broker. My question, again, to the panel, that they're $10,000 more than the low bid. Could you expand on why that was selected? And I, I wasn't in the room, like, there were five people. How, how you people came across with that recommendation? What did they have more than the other three insurance companies? And a question Ms. Houck raised last meeting, when this was bid out two years ago, USI was the low bidder at $35,000. And Joyce was $50,000, and Brown and Brown was $60,000. And I think Assurance was $70,000. And I mean, you know, when budget season comes, that we're cutting this and cutting that. And why was this company not recommended last time around when they were at $35,000, saying that they're ranked eight out of 100 of the largest brokers in the United States?
Mr. Crocomo, is there anybody who is available for comment? You brought in Mr. Schnee's questions.
I, I don't know if Andy Riley is on the call, or Ed. Eddie, were you on the committee? We're, I see Ed O'Neill.
Yes, I was, Ms. Crocomo.
Okay, can you answer, can you answer some of those questions?
Well, I, I would, I will attempt to try to answer them, but I would probably have to review what notes I may have had from the last RFP. It's been a while, and quite a few things have happened since then. It's my recollection that there was some items that were left out of USI's quote in the last round when we RFP'd this. And that was the reason that, that low number of $35,000 was felt to be inaccurate. But I have to go back through my notes. But I recall there was some, some things they may have left out of their pricing, which they included. And they, you know, were aware at this time that that price was to be all-inclusive. As far as the reasons we chose them, I can't speak for the committee members. I, I can speak for myself to a small extent to say that I felt comfortable that they adequately addressed all of the items that, that we had concerns about addressing for the county, county's insurance policies. And one of the items that we did take into consideration this time, I believe, maybe more so than last time, was the size of the company, not only the size of the company, but the volume of business they do with travelers, because travelers has been consistently, not only the person that we've chosen to go with, but one of the few insurance companies that was willing to quote our, our policies in the past. So one of the questions I came up with to the, to the committee and asked of the applicants was the volume they did and the number of clients that they have in the state of Pennsylvania that are municipal. And USI scored very well in those categories. And I personally feel, with my experiences in, in handling insurance policies, both with the county and previously, that if you have a, a broker that has a larger volume of business with a carrier, there are economies of scale and better pricing that can be obtained from those brokers with those policies. So what looks like a $10,000 difference may be considerably less than that if they have a larger chunk of business with travelers and they can get a quote from them as opposed to getting it from a smaller broker here in the area.
Okay, Mr. Haas, you're next.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you too, Mr. O'Neill, for explaining that. Because if you're Member Council, for those Members who were here two years ago, when we had our former provider, Brandon Brown, they expressed the exact same sentiments that Mr. O'Neill just did, that with economies of scale, with larger volume of business, with more nationwide reach, they can get a better deal for Luzerne County and therefore Luzerne County taxpayers. What I've done, I've actually sent everybody an email on council. You can check that if, if you're able to. But I also asked Mr. Damarah if he could post that for the benefit of the public, Mario, if he could do that at this point. It's last year's resolution that we passed in December. I'm only going to read just a few things here, but it's, the title there is "Resolution by Us approving the advertisement for an RFP for broker services." And if you look down at the third whereas, section two of the original RFP, "Resolved in the contract of choice states the successful broker developed consistency among various coverages, secure the broadest coverages available, issue quarter to the ports, provide value-added service to satisfaction of the county senior management, including loss claim analysis and steps to reduce its clean exposure, among many others." And that section six of the RFP also states that the county reserves the right to secure the service to different broker. So therefore, if you look at the next one as well, our, our, our insurance payments increased over 100% in one year. It's egregious. And therefore, that's the why, that's the reason why this county unanimously suggested that we thought this past July, we would advertise another RFP. And that's what the, the second one there is, if you can see in the minutes that were from, I think it's January 8th, I think they were finally approved, but the minutes, it was unanimous decision there. So, you know, going, just coming back, I'll try to get back on with my face, is that, and if you, and thank you for that, Mario. I really appreciate that. So, I mean, Bob, you know me, I'm, I'm, I love saving nickels and dimes wherever we can. I, I'm big into that. I think that's just good governing. It's good for households. It's good for government. And, and this is one of those cases where just because the bottom line is a little more expensive, does that, the lesser of the two does not mean that's the best choice. In this case, it's going to come around and hurt us in the long run when we have to actually go shop around for premiums. So I just encourage all of you to vote for USI clearly. I, I appreciate the Members of the Committee that, that put a lot of time and effort into this, taking with the unanimous decision, just like Bob shared. I want to support our professional staff in doing so. So again, thank you, Mr. O'Neill, and all the other Members of that Committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hi, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Sedman?
My concern is, I know I, I not deal with municipalities except here, but I know that, talking to my husband about this, and I, I just wondered, because we had a look for a broker last year, or two years ago, and it was really, one of the major things was, aside from pricing, was the personal relationship. Do we have a personal relationship with USI? Do we have any, you know, to me, if you call a broker and they call you back immediately was really important when you had a question about your insurance. And I just don't know if that happens. Or, you know, have we had problems with it right now?
Mr. Crocomo, is there somebody who could respond to that?
Well, I, I can tell you, what I can just tell you is from my experience, when I was the chief county solicitor, I dealt, you know, with the insurance broker quite frequently, and they were, Joyce Insurance was always very responsive to my inquiries and, and provided the information that I requested. You know, if you need something from Michelle Sperry, she, she deals with, with them as well. But I, I can only attest to, to what I, my experience was with them.
And one additional question. Harry, when we were going over the insurance rates, I remember how outraged you were over some of the pricing on the covering of law enforcement. And I thought there was, I, I mean, from what I heard from people that I talked to that were in the business, that was based on the number of lawsuits people were having because of law enforcement. There were lots of problems with law enforcement that caused a lot of lawsuits. And that's when, and you know, we had to settle some big things. That's one of the reasons I thought it was high, not necessarily because they were so out of line.
Mr. Chair, oh, sorry. Mr. Chair, are you finished?
Yes, I'm there.
Go ahead. Mr. Chair, along with what you're saying, Sheila, one of the main functions of a, of a, of a broker, and there's a lot, Harry listed down a whole bunch of the responsibilities. But correct me if I'm wrong, a major job of a broker is to get us the best premiums for our insurance going forward. Is that correct? That's one of their big responsibilities. So I, I checked back to see if there, I'm sure there was, in my, in my mind, the premiums were much higher last year than in, than in the past, in the past two years. And, and I did look into it, and it was $700,000 more. And I'm not, it's no reflection on our current broker, because we have a tremendous amount of claims that are going to be there now, and they're going to be there in the future. So, so we're relying on our broker to get us the best possible deal in our insurance premiums moving forward. So regardless of this current one we have now or the new one we're getting, we're banking on the new one to get us a cheaper rates as we move forward in each one of our, our insurance policies. So it's no guarantee they're going to get it for us if they're a bigger company, but that's one of their responsibilities to get it done. So that's something that we should consider. And, and again, going forward, that's a decision we're going to have to make. And it's a tough one because you don't know what's going to happen going forward. Because all those claims we have are going down the line, and they must be reported. Just think about children and youth. What's that going to look like going forward? And I don't care who we have as a broker. That's just my two cents. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else?
And did we, but, you hear?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, Sheila, go ahead.
Ms. Sedman, and then we'll come back to you, Mr. Chair.
I thought that we had asked the insurer, the broker at that time, and they had given us rationale on who they checked with. And I thought they did, I mean, they did what a broker does. They go to other companies and try to find the best deal. I, I thought when you asked some of those questions, Harry, they responded to us.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Haas.
Yes, indeed. And so, again, I, I don't expect everybody to recall, but two years prior, when we had Brown and Brown, they elicited all their proven results, their demonstrable results, that they saved us money. And remember that cyber attack we had, that disastrous cyber attack? And they still prevailed, and we still got, they, they, they saved us from a lot of liability and a lot of overhead. So again, and what Mr. O'Neill just said, we have to trust the professional staff who know a lot better than everybody here at the table. You know, we all have ideas about how, how good this is going to be. It, it comes down to economies of scale. Can you have the volume? Can you get the best rates because you do business, just like going to Sam's Club? All right, you're going to get a, a lower price because you've got the volume. And that's really what it comes down to. It's a simple question of economics, economies of scale. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, anyone else?
If not, I have just a couple items. Number one, I know myself, when we go to have the RFP published and ask for replies, I thought that's always a good business practice. Every two years, every four years, whatever the contract calls for, I think that's a proper practice to put it out for an RFP so that you see what's out there, what's available. So I didn't do it because of any other reason but that reason. Number two, we just talked about in the ADP contract that Luzerne County jobs, the fact of money. In this particular case, we have a vendor who's working and living in Luzerne County and is providing Luzerne County jobs and is providing a lower cost. Okay? Number three, the cyber attack, which Mr. Haas referred to, and I think that's a very clear issue. That's something we should talk about a little bit. At that point in time, when that was on our insurance policy, that was not a prevalent kind of thing. It was sporadic, and most people were not subject to that kind of thing. Obviously, if you watch over the past probably two years or more, whatever, you can see that there is a lot more of cyber attacks across the nation, and a lot of different entities, whether it be private, government, schools, or whatever. And so I think what you're going to see, and probably definitely will see, is that the premium for a cyber tax is going to be substantial now. And it's going to be substantial because there are so many attacks that are happening. And we've seen several local groups around here being subject to those attacks. And they are devastating. They are very devastating. So with that, that's my two cents.
Mr. Chair, can I say something quick?
Who's speaking?
Matt Vog.
Go ahead.
So I just have two questions. Manag, Ms. Manager, was it a unanimous decision? I think I heard that mentioned, so I just wanted to confirm, does that everyone on the committee recommend the same?
Yes, that's my understanding, but yeah, that was what was reported to me.
Okay, and then, what's the benefit of a two-year contract compared to RFPing every year?
Well, I think we have more continuity, and we have, we can get better rates perhaps, you know, with the insurance company, if we have a steady broker. So, but it really is, and it's to change every year logistically. I, now I see on a daily basis what Michelle Sparage does when it comes to insurance, and trying to get the insurance, and filling out the forms, and working with the broker, no matter who the broker is, it would be, it would be a lot more work to do it every year.
Okay. No, that helps, I know we've just been changing every two years instead. Okay, that's all I have, I mean, I think everyone knows my opinions on this, I'd rather save money on the bottom line instead of doing budget amendments of office supplies for $150, but I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Help? Yes. Ms. McDermott? No. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Seidman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
I'm saying.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No. Mr. McGinley, you like to change my vote since there's a tie?
Turn your vote to what?
A yes.
You're voting yes now, you're not abstaining, correct?
That's correct, since it's a tie.
I do. Mr. Urban changes his vote. Thank you for that. Six yes, five no, motion carries. Moving down to number four. Motion to adopt an ordinance submitting the intergovernmental agreement with public township for the repair and dedication of roads in accordance with Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Law, Act 177, 1996, previously adopted as Act 180 on 1992. This is the part of the public hearing that we had earlier this evening. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
A segment, we have a second.
Second.
Ms. House? On the question. Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott? Yes. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Seidman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you. Moving down to number five. Motion regarding the Luzerne County Arts Advisory Board, we have a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I want some Spanish bar steak going on. I'm going to come in. They're talking about insurance, and they're like wacky about it.
Hey, Rich Nardone, you're not muted.
I don't know who that is.
He's from the election board.
Yeah, I know, but I don't know, I, you know, I don't have any access to who. I would ask the public at this point, since you're not commenting on anything, would you please mute your microphones? And then that, when we get down to public comment, invite you to unmute your microphone at that time, please. So we have a motion to adopt the ordinance established in Luzerne County Arts Advisory Board. We have a motion. Mr. Perry, we have a second.
Done.
Mr. Schnee? On the question.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Honestly, I think this is unneeded, the gentleman, I guess, that you guys have in mind that might want to make in charge of this particular board is not here tonight. I mean, I think he should come in and explain himself to the public. A board that only has bylaws or proposed bylaws to have only one meeting a year, it is really, I think, just unnecessary, I mean, that's what's in the actual, you know, in the notes here. I think if you're going to set up a board, you should have at least monthly meetings, or meetings that are much more frequent than once a year. It's a waste of county council's time to vote on such a proposed ordinance to only have like a board that actually is required to meet once a year.
Quarterly.
I think that's not a manual at one point.
It's in the bylaws.
It's in the bylaws, Steve.
I did read something somewhere that says once a year.
No, the resolution says quarterly also.
I think quarterly seems to be a good.
Does that make sense? Well, still in all, I think it's an unnecessary as far as art is concerned. You know, there are other important things in county government that are more important than the arts. I mean, I am a person that obviously is involved in the music industry myself, but I don't think it's really necessary for us to get caught. I mean, if somebody wants to take it on themselves in the public, by all means, go for it.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, I would like to just say, I mean, a question or a comment, I guess, there is no county funding. Right. Involved here, right? And, you know, it's hard not to say that you don't support, that, you know, that you don't support the arts. I support the arts, I'm a musician, but I would have liked to hear a little bit more detail about exactly what kind of practical application this would have. Again, I have a question of the title of the board, like, if you're advisory, who are you advising? But, you know, we've had other boards that we've named, and, you know, if they have, if they help a certain number of county residents, it's fine. I don't know what they have in mind to do with this board, but I'll support it as long as it's not possible.
Okay.
Mr. McGinley, yeah, this is where I caught it at, actually, okay, so I read, meetings of the Luzerne County Arts Advisory Board shall be held on a quarterly basis at a minimum, but it says at least one advisory board meeting will be held after 6:00 PM each year. So that means, it's kind of contradictory that, you know, just saying, maybe you take out the words each year.
Well, we have, like, our council meetings, we have to have at least one a month, and that's after 6:00.
Right, but if you're going to, shall hold one every quarter, that's four meetings a year, and then if you're.
Right, and one of them has to be after 6:00.
Okay.
Which would hopefully allow the public to have a little more, right? Okay.
I know that Mr. Grossman would have probably been here tonight if we had asked him to. I mean, he's been here, and he's been doing this, I think he's been starting to talk to us already in a couple of years. And I think if, if anything, if we want to postpone the vote on this to have him come here, I think he would be more than willing and provide lots of ideas.
Mr. Chair? Yes. I think we should go ahead and vote on this, and this has been a long time in the making, and if you remember years ago, Mr. Grossman talked to us about this idea back in the library in Pittston. I mean, he deserves a chance. He has great ideas, he's really passionate about this. Let's give him a chance, we'll get him in here, it's not an next meeting, we'll get him in here to explain. We're not in easiest conditions here, and, but we'll get him in, and you'll be impressed with him, because he is very impressive, and he's very, very involved in the arts. It can be nothing but a positive situation as he moves through the county. He has some great ideas, I think we should go ahead forward and get a vote on this, and move it forward. It's been going on here for the last, well, before COVID. Just to add, Mr. Calvert was on the council. That was his initial visit with us. Okay?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Ross?
I agree with Mr. Perry, I think we should give Mr. Grossman a chance, and I think we want to get as maximum buy-in for something like this as possible, creating more government, so why don't we postpone it, have Mr. Grossman come back, answer everybody's questions? I make that motion, actually. Motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone by Mr. Haas, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Urban? If you vote yes, you're postponing the motion, if you vote no, we're going to go back to proceed with the motion, okay? Mr. Haas and Mr. Urban? Roll call on the postponement of this motion.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Seidman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Eight no.
Three yes, eight no, motion does not pass. Going back to the motion by Mr. Perry, second by Mr. Schnee to adopt the ordinance. Roll call, please.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Seidman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Eight yes, three no.
Eight yes, three no. We have a motion to approve Luzerne County Arts Advisory Board bylaws.
I'm moved.
Ms. House?
Second.
Mr. Schnee? On the question?
To be very clear, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Certainly.
So the bylaws state, and I read it a few times, but there, it's an advisory, it's a board in an advisory capacity, so there will be no spending the funds or accumulating funds, correct?
I believe you're 100% correct, Chris Ross.
Thank you, it would have been helpful for Mr. Grossman to hear for that, that's why I thought it would have been prudent, but, you know, now here we are, we're not 100% sure, even though it looks like it is, okay? Thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. McGinley, I have a question. Quite honestly, I take issue with voting on bylaws, you know, if it's going to be the advisory board, I think they should, you know, look at their, whoever is chosen to sit on this board, look at the bylaws themselves, and pass them on their own. I don't think we should be passing bylaws that have nothing to do with us, and there's no appointed members to this particular board at this time. Obviously, you have a premeditation on who you're going to choose as one individual already, or if the majority wants to choose a certain individual, but you don't even know who the other members are at this point. So this putting the cart before the horse here, I don't think we should be passing any bylaws that are going to not impact us.
Mr. Chair?
Well.
Quick question in this house. Quick question. To establish a board, you have to have bylaws. So that's why the bylaws are in, Steve, we have, you know, we're not going to put the cart before the horse the other way. We're going to start up a board without any bylaws, you know, I think they go hand in hand. That's it, that's my two cents.
Well, I think that was the issue when the county carers commission was started, that it was, it was, you got it without bylaws, and I think it's, it's fine to have bylaws as a starting point, but there is also, the law's article says that they can amend them, so if they don't like those bylaws, they can amend.
Yeah, and I think that's a very good point, that once the board is seated and they meet, they can offer amendments to the bylaws without process. Okay. Ms. House made the motion, Mr. Schnee made the second, roll call, please.
So, Mr. McGinley, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
So if we, if we vote no on the bylaws, then the board forms without bylaws, is that how it works?
We vote no on the bylaws, we don't approve them.
Then there's no board.
Oh, there's a board.
No, you have a resolution to establish the board, an ordinance, excuse me.
So, so is this, so the ability for us to vote on the bylaws, so council votes no on the bylaws, what's the ramifications to the board?
Well, we'll have to decide that if we get to that point, Mr. Griffin, I'm not sure. I would hope that we have.
And I think that goes, yeah, I think that goes to Mr. Urban's point, is the ability for us to create bylaws without, you know, the, maybe we should have did it the other way around, I'm not really sure, but I'm just concerned about what happens to the board if we don't approve their bylaws, so. But we'll see how the vote goes first.
Yep, we'll see how the vote goes, but I think if you approve bylaws without having a board, I don't believe that makes a lot of sense.
I just want to add another comment as far as some color, though, I mean, if we go down this slippery slope of approving bylaws now for this board, that board, what goes to say that we can't go in and modify some other authority board or commission that falls under purview?
We've had, I had to ratify amendments that made other boards.
Right, I mean, we've ratified.
Primarily in 2012, we've approved amendments to many bylaws.
Yeah, but this is going down the road of actually changing their bylaws on how they, you know, impact their own board, so.
I think we're giving them a starting point.
Right.
It's a starter set.
I don't approve that.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Seidman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes, with the caveat about the funding issue, yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Nine yes, two no.
Nine yes, two no, motion carries. Number six, motion to adopt the resolutions to prohibit a qualification standard based on vaccination against COVID-19 for applicants for employment or current county employees, and prohibiting discrimination or discipline based on saying. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Haas makes the motion.
I'll second it. Mr. Griffin?
Mr. Griffin? Very good. On the question.
On the question.
Go ahead, Ms. House.
So the third whereas in this resolution says, whereas the county is not subject to plan, I mean, it talks about the plan that requires private employers to have 100 or more employees to have mandatory vaccination in their place. But the very next whereas says the county is not subject to plan. So, I mean, in my opinion, what this resolution would do is actually direct manager in how to run the county. I think it's giving direction to the manager, and telling the manager how to run the county in a way that we, I don't believe council is entitled to do. I, I think that any place that serves the public as much as the county does has to have the public's safety as a matter of concern, but I think that's an essential, this, the county is not subject to the plan, and any decision to do this, I think, would be a managing decision, so I won't support this resolution.
Thank you. Ms. Seidman?
Yes. First of all, I mean, the language in here which says that we know, the council knows that it's unconstitutional, not legally permissible. Where do you get that? It is constitutional, Terry, we sat in a legal class which showed us that that was constitutional. They did it with smallpox, they do it now, they did it with polio, that's why we don't have smallpox and polio. I'm really offended by it in the fact that I know that vaccination is the safest, most efficient way to get rid of this pandemic, or to reduce it so it's not substantial at all, but
A bunch of bull.
I find this, I find this absolutely unacceptable. And also, I know there are people listening to this that are, because I've received multiple, multiple emails over the last six weeks maybe, from constituents, they don't give their names, maybe they do give their names, but to telling me that they're watching me, and every vote on this mandating of vaccinations, I think that's terrible. I find that trying to threaten me, I think there are many people that believe that the vaccination, mandating it or not, is the right thing to do.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you. That, those emails that Ms. Seidman talks about, I've got those as well, I'm sure everybody on council's gotten them. C cap, uh, I was on a, maybe Ms. Seddon wasn't able to attend the C cap meeting that they discussed that. Uh, I think the president of C cap stated that they are spam emails. They're really not coming from constituents. They're coming from people who are drafting those emails and sending them as leverage to make us think that that's our constituency. But that's what C cap said throughout the state. Everybody seems to be getting those emails. So just a point of clarification, whether they're actually bona fide emails or not, I'm not, I'm not stating they probably are not, according to C cap. But on, on another point is the concern that I have with mandating vaccinations is, and I've made this statement before to other folks as well, is if we're going to mandate somebody has to take the vaccine, then we should be responsible if anything happens to them by taking that vaccine. So if we're going to say to somebody, you have to take the vaccine because if you don't, you won't have a job, then if they take the vaccine and they develop some kind of health problem from that vaccine, the county should be responsible for that liability. And that's the concern that I have with the mandating vaccines throughout the country. But more importantly, is I understand everybody's concern about being vaccinated and the safety issues and try and get rid of the pandemic. I've been vaccinated and, and I, the concern that I have is there's such a double standard and there's such hypocrisy in this country about this vaccine, that that's why we have these discussions right now at this table. Is we're telling people you have to be vaccinated, but people coming across the border don't have to be. And that is another issue. What's that? That is another, that is another issue for me. So, and that's why I don't attend these meetings, and that's why I said I won't wear a mask, is because the hypocrisy is just breathtaking. And, and that's the problem that I'm having. So I'm not going to, I'm going to support this, this, and that's why I seconded it, is because I think if we're going to mandate people have to take the vaccine, then we should be responsible to whatever happens to that person who takes that vaccine. Thank you.
I'd like to say, Walter, if they don't take the vaccine and you spread it, should that person be responsible too?
Well, you know what? Maybe, maybe they could be. Maybe they should take them in the court and sue them. I don't know, but I'm just telling you that I think that if we're telling somebody we're going to take their job away from them, which is a, a substantial penalty, this isn't like saying, well, hey, if you don't wear a seatbelt, we're going to give you a fine. How about if we say we're not going to wear a seatbelt, we'll take your car off of you? How about that? I think that's appropriate. I mean, if we want to save lives, let's, how far do we go with this through government? It's government overreach that we really don't need to participate in. People have an intelligent process. If they can't take the vaccine for whatever reason, they shouldn't take it. If they feel unsafe, they shouldn't take the vaccine. And I, I certainly appreciate people's rights to choose, but I don't think it's fair for us to mandate without being responsible for that mandate.
I couldn't, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Urban, did you have a? No. Okay, Mr. Haas.
All right, no, thanks, everybody.
He's okay.
And again, obviously, I know this would be divisive. I hate doing this. And the thing is, uh, in my time on council, we keep on getting things that roll down the hill from Harrisburg and from the federal government. When President Biden got on TV last week, that's what caused this. When he said businesses of 100 or more people will be subject to this. How arbitrary is that? So if your business has 99 people, now suddenly you're, it's, it's, it doesn't apply to you? Where does it stop? Does it stop with business? Does it go to government? Does it go to families? This is egregious. In regards of how you feel about this issue, this should really alarm every American. This is an incredibly slippery slope. And Sheila, I always tell you I love you because I, I like your mindset, because you, you read a lot of your stuff. But it isn't the Constitution. And yes, I was at that C cap meeting. I'm going to read for you amendment nine. This is number nine in the Bill of Rights and number 10. It says, "The enumeration of the constitution of certain rights shall not be construed to deny or disparage others retained by the people." In other words, the right to do to your own body as you see fit. Remember, we keep on hearing, "My body, my choice," but that's another issue. That doesn't evidently apply to this one. Secondly, amendment 10, "The powers not delegated to the United States by the Constitution or prohibited by it to the states are reserved to the states respectively or to the people." This federal overreach is tyranny in a very unadulterated form. This president overreached big time, and people are extremely upset about it. I got those nonsense emails too. You can tell that those emails, that they're all spam. They're just copy and paste it. What my concern is, this, this wells up inside me when I see this, because where does this stop? This is not an anti-vax issue. I've got a couple of emails that disagreed with me, and they were frankly very appropriate. I really appreciate the citizens who sent those to me. This is not anti-vax. This is first and foremost, a constitutional violation. Secondly, it's a, it, it is an experimental vaccination. If you look at simple virology, the clinical studies, the clinical triers are like three years minimum. Some of them go to like seven years. We're going to force people and mandate them and coerce them, and then we're going to punish them if they don't do this to their own bodies. They do this in a lot of other countries, but certainly not the United States of America. I encourage all of you, please, stand against tyranny, protect the people, even though it might sound like it's a wonderful idea. There's a lot of, of bogus facts going around there on both sides, but ultimately, this is a severe breach of personal freedom. We should all be very terrified.
Mr. McGinley, Kendra.
Go ahead, Ms. Rado.
Um, Mr. Haas said that he doesn't like bringing it up because it's divisive, but I feel like voting on this right now so prematurely, when Ms. Prokomo clearly stated that it wasn't like in her plans to mandate the vaccine anytime in the near future, that it depended on what, what was going on. So we're voting on this so prematurely, and it is divisive. It's the same thing as the Second Amendment sanctuary we voted on. It's a matter of national, federal government politics that the council needs to vote on, and especially right now. We're saying that we don't want to mandate the vaccine, and I agree, at this point, we don't need to mandate the vaccine. And, and what I think about President Biden's stance on it is neither here nor there, because I think most people know where I stand with that, but it's just a divisive thing that we're voting on, and at this point in time, it's irrelevant. It's meant to be divisive. And it's the same thing I said about the sanctuary city with the Second Amendment.
Ms. Seddon?
No, I, I, I agree with Ms. Rado. I also agree with Ms. House, that I don't think it's, it's really the manager's position to do this. And she has not indicated that at this point she's ready to. So first of all, it's premature, Harry. Second of all, it is not unconstitutional. But that whole thing, Harry, you're a teacher. Do you, would you like your kids not to be vaccinated? And come into your classroom and spread, spread whatever, polio, smallpox? They've fined people before for smallpox for not taking the vaccine. It is, uh, when it gets to the Supreme Court, we'll see if it's acceptable or not, if it's legal or not. You may be right, I may be wrong, but right now, I'm taking the cautionary side.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Chair. I kind of agree with, with Kendra so much, but we don't need to have federal politics coming down here into Loser County, in our council. This, we have enough problems to worry about in, in dealing with that. Having said that, we've got to deal with it because it's, it's in front of us. I had a bad case of COVID. I had the two shots. I believe in the shots. But I don't believe in mandating the shots. So I'm going to leave it at that. I'm not going to go any further. It's a personal thing, and I, I want to stay out of, I want to stay out of the federal politics in here. But that's just my decision personally, and I think everybody has their own personal decisions. And I don't want them to lose their jobs over something like this. But that, that's, that's my two cents.
Mr. Griffin, yeah, I'm going to add two cents here. I, I think, Harry, I think the better route, if you were going to do this and, and sort of mandate something, I think you could do it as an ordinance to update personnel code, which would be, I think, the appropriate method to, to do this, if you were going to put this in place. You know, the ordinance process would, would sort of memorialize it within the personnel code of the county. And that's what drives the policy. I mean, council can drive policy in this, in this county. I don't believe in any mandates. I mean, what, what if the government went, went and mandated potassium chloride? Would, would you take the shot then? You know, I mean, quite honestly, you know, these are, these are things that, that are encroaching on your own personal freedoms in life. I mean, and think about what we're doing too. I mean, I, obviously, the federal government has an impact on us in some respects because we represent a county. I mean, we get mandates that come down from Washington and Harrisburg. And, and sometimes we do have to address them at, at the local level, to stand up against tyranny and big government. Uh, some of us do it here on a local level, you know, for we the people, or we the government, or we the county government. And quite honestly, I don't think any mandate to tell you what you can or can't put in your body is something that, that we need to sort of do, but I don't believe that we, we should mandate any type of vaccine within the county. And likewise, I think there is a huge liability question. You go stick a needle in somebody's arm, and I, I happen to know some people that were impacted by the shot that have some side health problems now because of.
Mr. McGinley, Kendra.
Yes, Mr. Perry.
Can I make a motion to table this until we know more about the vaccine? Not the vaccine, I'm sorry, the virus.
Okay, we have a table from Ms. Rado.
Yeah.
Second from
Ms. Seddon.
Ms. Seddon, okay. Our motion to table, no further discussion. You vote yes, this is table. You vote no, we continue with the receipt to the vote. Roll call, please.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Haas?
A table seems like leadership, but it's a cop-out, and you're abating tyranny. Shameful. No, absolutely not. Make a vote, make a, make a decision, take a stand, please.
South? No. McDermott? No. Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Seddon?
Wait a minute. I, I, I kind of got.
You vote?
Yes.
It's table. It's table. You vote no, the table's removed, we go back to the process of voting.
Yes.
Yes. What, what would you want to change it?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott has changed her vote to yes, and Ms. Seddon's also changed her vote to yes.
And mine, mine too. It's there. Yes, yes.
Mr. Perry's a yes also.
What is it about?
Yes. Mr. Griffin, Mr. Haas, and Ms. House.
And what is it about?
The vote is to table this resolution that was proposed by Mr. Haas regarding the vaccination.
Yes.
You voted yes to table it.
The table.
Ms. House, you voted?
No.
No, not, okay. And Mr. Griffin was a no?
Correct.
And Mr. Haas, you are no, I think?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. McGinley?
I vote no, but I don't, uh, agree with this at all, and I would be supportive if we did vote on this. You would see a vote of no also, because I think it clearly falls in the powers or influence of the county manager, because those are employees. And we, as county council people, do not have any kind of jurisdiction in that particular venue. Thank you.
Seven yes, four no.
Okay, it's postponed.
Can I just offer something, just to put everybody at ease? This, and, and I understand what the president said. I understand its applicability. My decisions are based on what is best locally for Loser County. And I can tell you, this, uh, of vaccination for county.
Uh, your connection is bad or something.
I.
Mr. Koch? Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Did she lose a connection or something? She seems to be back. Go ahead.
Okay, it's not, it, it's, it's not, uh, uh, it's certainly not on the, a list of how we're going to combat it. My theory is if we get to the point with COVID in Loser County where I have to force county employees to get vaccinated, the, the county as a whole will be in serious trouble, uh, health-wise. Do I believe that, uh, individuals, uh, can protect themselves from COVID and can protect themselves from spreading COVID by being vaccinated? Absolutely, I believe that. But that is not something that I envision of forcing on the county employees. So I, 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 I will tell council as we go along, if we're going to change, uh, our, uh, our, uh, if we're going to change from the mask mandate to anything else, I am going to inform council before I do it. But I can tell you that forcing employees to be vaccinated is, is not on that list. And, uh, if we get to that point, we as a whole county, uh, really do have to, uh, we have to reflect, we really have to have some reflection on that. So what, how I'm going to end my statement is that, uh, for all the healthcare workers that are going out to their shift tonight, uh, I want to thank them. I want to thank all the healthcare workers, day in and day out, for so long have heroic in their effort to try to make sure that the residents of Loser County are safe. Thank you.
Okay. Moving down to number seven. Motion to approve the letter of consent of the final submission of revised regional and local plans this year 2021 and this year 2024. That's the whip, that's the workforce investment board. You have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second?
Second, Mr. Perry. On the question?
Well, on the question, I have a question, because it says, it was sent on, the request was made on July 12th, and, uh, the second letter, follow-up letter, says that she had to submit the final paperwork later than Friday, September 24th. So do we need to take a vote? Does it?
Well, I, I, when I received that letter on the 24th, I replied and told her that we'd not be till 28th. So she was aware of that. I do believe we have to take a vote, and we have supported this in the past because it allows them access to funding.
Okay, so what was the delay from July, though? I mean, we had till July, now from July, so we're down to.
Mr. Griffin, go ahead.
Yeah, and that was my, my question as well that Ms. Hauck just raised, is this letter was sent, this letter was sent to yourself and to Mr. Perry on July the 12th. And, and we're just now getting it on the agenda, and it's late getting on the agenda. Why was this email not sent to council when it was sent to you and to Mr. Perry? What's the reason why we did not get this email?
To be honest with you, Mr. Griffin, I don't remember receiving it at all. Uh, I do not dispute what's there, but I don't remember receiving it all, and it, and as, as with all emails I get, I believe, you know, certain council has access to, I would have sent it if I thought, you know, something that I should be sending out. I did not, I don't remember receiving it at all. Mr. Perry gets it because he's the vice chair and, and the liaison to the whip, but I think Ms. Hauck would remember, we did that many years ago.
Did Mr. Perry get the email and not send it to us either?
No, it's a good question. I probably got the email, but I thought it would be, you know, it was going to be taken care of, so I didn't say anything about.
Well, it, and, and it's, and it's marked on their importance, high importance, because they obviously needed council action so they could, uh, send us off to the state in plenty of time. They said that their board was going to meet on a certain day, so they needed that reply back. And we didn't give them the respect or the courtesy to reply back in a timely fashion because two members of council got the email and didn't send it to council. And I think that's, that's one of the issues that's got to be discussed at the work session as well.
I would dispute that a little bit, Mr. Griffin, because I've had different differences with my emails at times, and I really cannot verify that I received them.
Well, Ms. Ms. Lannahan could have probably checked with you in August.
Yeah, she could have checked with us very easily.
Her, her follow-up was two days after our last meeting, which was already too late to, to get around to a meeting that.
Oh, and I, I agree with you on that, Ms. Hauck. I think, I think there's a couple of issues here. I think, uh, Ms. Lannahan, Ms. Lannahan certainly should have picked up the phone and called or sent a follow-up email and possibly sent it to all of council under the LCCM address, so that way we were sure to always get it. I'm, but this is, this is, again, this is the same issue that we'll discuss further on in the work session, but uh, I think the issue at hand is we need to, uh, vote on this thing so we can move it along, but I just, I'm just a little bit concerned that, 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 you know, nobody sent that out to council. We didn't act on it, so it's all. That's, that's all I have to say. Thanks, Mr. Griffin.
Okay. I, I think, you know, also as well, I mean, this probably should have been in a resolution type of form. I think, you know, also as well, I mean, this probably should have been in a resolution-type format instead of just a simple letter.
Yeah, that's what they asked for.
Right, I get that, but.
So that's the request.
Still in action.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schneek?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Eight yes, three no.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Motion to introduce amending the 2021.
Mr. DeLuca.
What was that?
Mr. DeLuca wanted you.
Go ahead.
Actually, I just wanted to tell you, the, I have to announce the executive session, and I wanted to get to that before you got to public comment, but I see you have another.
Fine, I, yeah, thank you, Mr. DeLuca.
Okay.
You want to do that now or do you want to wait till after?
I'll do it now if it's not a problem.
That's fine, no, go ahead.
Council met an executive session from 5:00 PM until 5:20 PM, 25:00 PM. Received a report from the acting county manager and discussed personnel matters. No deliberation took place and no decisions were made. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Mr. DeLuca. Number eight, motion amending the 2021 fiscal year budget for Loser County. This is the DA LEO agreement that refers to. Do we have a motion?
Present it.
Mr. Schneek, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Haas. I just want to say, and this was something that came to us on Monday, yesterday. It was not reviewed by the Office of Law, it was not reviewed by Budget and Finance, it was not reviewed by the District Attorney's Office because of the timing coming in so late. So at this point, I'm going to make a motion to postpone this until we have a chance to have that reviewed by those three hundred seconds.
Just an introduction.
I'm making a motion to postpone it.
I don't think you can postpone the introduction, Vogt.
I think you can.
Mr. DeLuca?
I don't think so.
Introduce the, it's an ordinance, right?
Correct, it's amendment.
It can be reviewed and amended if needed before it's adopted.
Well, we don't have information in the ordinance because it hasn't been.
Right.
It's absent. It should be sent in time so we could have it reviewed.
It's not complete, is that right?
That's correct.
It's missing line items and things like that, but I believe actually those line item numbers were sent by the manager already. But my point is, you can introduce it, and it can be amended anytime up to adoption.
But it's incomplete at this moment. As it stands, that the.
I drafted the ordinance, it is complete.
Excuse me, Mr. DeLuca has the floor, please.
Okay.
It says at the appropriate line items. It just does not list them specifically, but it says at the appropriate line items.
Again, this was submitted, I think, yesterday. And Mr. McGinley had forwarded it to me. I told him that we did not. We were trying to get everything in during the two-week period before the meeting. We didn't review it.
This is a question of rules of order of, do you have the right, the ability to postpone a vote to introduce an ordinance?
The point is, though, if the actual ordinance itself that's being proposed doesn't have information that's required, could this, could this be adopted in its current format? Or does it beg amendment?
I think it could be adopted as it stands because it says at the appropriate line items. It just does not list them specifically. But it can't be adopted today anyway.
That's not the point. The point is whether or not the ordinance itself is, will absolutely require amendment in order to be voted on finally.
No, it does not require, it does not require, the way it sits now, it's saying that we're creating a fund 526124194. That's what, all we're doing is creating a fund. They can, the Budget and Finance Department can come back and say what particular cost centers they want in that fund. But we're creating a fund in that ordinance, and the charter does not allow us to, does not allow tabling or postponing the introduction of an ordinance, no matter what form it's in.
That's untrue. That's untrue.
It says, it is true. 211 says we could bring an ordinance at any time, as long as it's in writing. It doesn't say anything more than that.
Right.
Nothing more.
Which means you can bring it, you can postpone it because it does not specifically disallow that.
Well, if you read down further, it says that ordinance will be considered and get four members' vote. If it doesn't get to four members, it shall not be considered any further in Section B. So there's nothing in the charter that allows for postponing an introduction of an ordinance.
I believe as long as it receives, I believe as long as it receives the four votes. I think we had this issue previously, maybe a year and a half ago. It wouldn't make sense, the charter allows less than a majority to introduce an ordinance by allowing four votes. So it would not, it would go against that to allow the majority to, or to prevent the introduction. So I believe if, that it would, could be voted on, if it receives four votes, it's introduced.
There is no motion to postpone based on Mr. DeLuca's interpretation. We have a motion by Mr. Schneek, second by Ms. Haas. On the question? Roll call.
Mr. Vogt?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Randall?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schneek?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes, to introduce.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Five yes, six no.
Motion is introduced. We're now down to public comment on non-agenda items. Mr. Griffin? Thank you for waiting. Oh, is this on? No, Mr. Griffin, we have the small mics on the table. If you would take one over there, that would be great. Thank you.
I don't know how it works.
It's on, that's all you have to do is put it on the podium and it should work fine.
Good evening, council members and members of the public. Greg Griffin, Swarsville. I just wanted very quickly to go over something that happened on April 9th, 2019. Mothers who lost their children to opioids asked council members for a letter asking for a federal law enforcement drug task force. Now, there's new members of council, but most of the members are still here. And I know the new members also are very supportive of law enforcement. Council members signed this letter. Now, that letter is 2019, April 9th, with most of the signatures of the council members. Council members signed this letter because you wanted to protect the people. Wilkes-Barre City Council members also signed the letter. Hazleton City Council members also signed a letter. Three letters, three councils, thirty signatures. U.S. Attorney, federal U.S. Attorney Bruce Brandler and David Freed, they've responded. And I'm calling it a task force. It's what the letter asked for. There's been several previous drug raids in eighteen months since the letter. And most recently, four properties were raided in Wilkes-Barre last week. Where over $1 million worth of fentanyl and cocaine were seized. And three dangerous drug dealers were arrested. I think we have a task force. They haven't really announced it, but it was so many agencies involved, led by the U.S. federal attorneys, who we wrote the letter to, all of us wrote the letter to. And thanks to all of you, you did this. Wilkes-Barre City Council did it. Hazleton City Council did it, and they asked the feds for help. This letter was hand-carried, the three letters were hand-carried to Washington, D.C. by our Mothers' Opioid Committee and presented to their two U.S. congressmen and two U.S. senators and U.S. Attorney Barr. We have to remember that Loser County right now still is third, third out of sixty-seven Pennsylvania counties for young people dying from drug overdoses. So, we're behind Allegheny County and Philly. So, we, there's going to be more raids coming. There's a lot more work to be done. But this third out of sixty-seven Pennsylvania counties stat, statistic came from our deputy district attorney, Dan Zola, who said that on a Hazleton stage on an opioid seminar. So, there's a lot more work to be done. All of you need to be thanked so much because it's hard for a government official to put their name on a piece of paper because that paper, this doesn't expire. We're holding this up. Bruce Brandler, the U.S. Attorney, and David Freed, the one before that, they were very impressed with your signatures. Thirty signatures from three different councils of government. So, the drug dealers are worried, but this fentanyl is very dangerous. We're a long way from actually eradicating our communities from drug dealers. But there's more raids coming. We're in constant contact with Bruce Brandler. We don't know where the raids are, but they told us just, you know, they hear us in Loser County. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you. I see some other members out there in the public. Anybody want to address council at this point? No? Anybody who is calling in at this time would like to address council?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raabo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raabo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I brought up at the last meeting, and also in the last real estate committee meeting, pertaining to the purchase of the property at the upset sale by Hazleton City, using their quote-unquote land bank authority to use their Trump bid to pay only the delinquent taxes and not allow for other bidders to become the property. I did not mention at the last meeting that also, not only did the City of Hazleton violate the land bank statute, but they also violated the amendment to the state tax sale law, the new one that I presented to county council back in July when the State Flight Task Force said that entities like LLCs had to register prior to the tax, any upset or judicial sale. It says that the Bureau, the Tax Claim Bureau, has to provide a complete list of applications under Section 502A, five days prior to any sale. And that includes non-individuals. And they have to get, the municipalities have to get a list. So therefore, I'm asking, Mr. Chairman, if the acting county manager or the real estate committee or the council as a whole received the list from the Tax Claim Bureau with respect to this land bank purchase. Because if you, if the county did, and they knew that this land bank wasn't legally established or had an appointed board, then the, as I said at the last meeting, the county will be held culpable along with the City of Hazleton in this purchase. Also, I would like to commend and praise the vice chairman for what he said about bylaws. If there's, and also that there needs to be bylaws along with ordinance that establishes a board. I couldn't agree with him more because I think in this respect, with regards to Hazleton City and the establishment of the land bank and not, or the non-establishment there, therefore, and not able to have an appointed board, how in the world could they make this purchase? So, I think that this matter, as I said at the last meeting, Mr. Chairman, the Tax Claim Bureau needs to be informed to delay the transfer of this deed because the mayor of Hazleton last week said that the deed transfer is going to be taking place within a matter of forty-five days. So, I would suggest that you and the other council members have the Office of Law look into this matter and talk to the Tax Claim Office and at least delay the transfer until this matter is sorted out. Thank you.
Okay. Other members of the public? Your motion for adjournment.
Mr. McGinley, may I speak? I just wanted to thank Mr. Griffin for, I remember you bringing that letter to us. You were really the engine behind us making those signatures. And I have a feeling that you did the same thing at Wilkes-Barre Council and Hazleton Council. You put that letter together, you talked about David Freed that night, and then you talked about Bruce Brandler later. And I think you're to be commended more than our signatures for starting that push.
I have lots of council members, and Councilman Harry Haas did help me a lot with the letter because I'm not good at writing letters, but I am good at knocking doors, but thank you.
Your motion for adjournment.
Oh.
Mr. Perry?
One second, Mr. Chair, if I could, too. Mr. Chairman.
What?
Just one quick word, too. If I may speak.
Mr. Haas, go ahead.
Hey, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Griffin, I appreciate that. But even more so, I wanted to speak out and give Vito DeLuca in the Office of Law a kudos. Thank you to Patrick De LaValle to help me write that. Actually, he's the one that really crafted that ordinance. That's the first one that I haven't had to write my own veto. So, heartfelt thanks to your office, to Patrick. Keep up the great work. I really, really appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion for adjournment. And a second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, in opposition, any extensions? No, I heard most of Perry's will commence again at 8:00 PM with the work session, please. And so, Mr. Griffin?
Recording stopped.